Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. This is a continuation from our meeting of January 11th. Yes, January 11th, I'm sorry, looking right at the date. And this is an item that the Board agreed yesterday to add for Item 59 for Rescue and Recovery Operation at the La Cuencheeta landslide site. And I'd like to ask our CEO, Mr. Johnson, to start the meeting off with information that's been working on over the last 24 hours.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, we're not here to ask you to make any decisions, but to inform you of what the status of the current situation is. And we have department heads here to give you a briefing. Our purpose in asking you to have this meeting is to keep you close at hand and scheduled in the event that there are turns of event that require decisions by your Board from a policy standpoint. To date, we do not have any requests for that. I guess we could start with the Sheriff giving you a brief overview. And the Fire Chief is here, and then I'll give you a summary of kind of what we're doing at the staff level in my office.
Thank you. I'd like to appreciate the Board for going out to La Cuencheeta and seeing firsthand the level of destruction and the rescue efforts that are there on scene, as you're all aware. But for the record, the Governor was there this morning. He again was very appreciative of all the excellent work and local cooperation that was going on at the scene. He spent time not only with the rescue workers, but also with residents, hearing what their concerns were. He issued the state emergency declaration following Supervisor Long presenting him with a local declaration. So we're en route. He said he'll follow that through with the President. Congressman Galliglio was there again to reinforce that the congressional support would be there and that they'd assist Congressman Capps in moving things along in the direction to get resources and funding and assistance moving from the federal level. As you're aware of, at this point, there are 10 confirmed dead from that one incident. That's not all the lives that were lost during the storms in Ventura County. There were others, but of the La Cuencheeta incident. The good news this morning, and the good news doesn't come very frequently at a time like this, but when we met at the site, there were 10 high-risk missing that were probably under the debris field for every indication that we had at that time from the reports of other people in the area. This morning, at the community meeting, and the community meeting was conducted at the fairgrounds, had a good turnout. About 60 residents were there, had some very pertinent questions. They've been well taken care of. They appreciate the efforts of not only local government, but the Red Cross and others that have come to their assistance. When the names were presented of the people that were on the high-risk group, four of them were at the meeting. So we were able to eliminate those people. Three others through our investigative work of our major crimes investigators have been eliminated because they've been discovered elsewhere. So of that group, only three remains outstanding. That does not mean that there may only be three people there. There are others. What our investigative team is doing is they're putting out a wider probability listing, anyone that's ever held title, anybody who's ever stayed with anyone that we know there, anybody that comes up on LexisNexis, anyone that a witness reports to us as, gee, the occasionally stayed in somebody's garage or camper. We're looking at all of those, and that's an expanded list. They're low probability, but everyone we can eliminate helps us to make better decisions about extending the rescue efforts at the scene. So that effort is ongoing, but the high-risk list has shrunk to three, which is very good news for us and everyone who's working at the scene. As a result of the meeting this morning, those meetings will be conducted daily. We're facilitating people being transported from La Cuencheeta if they've chosen to stay there so that they can attend the meetings. And we're also facilitating transportation from those that either sought location north in Santa Barbara or south in Ventura so they can participate, be informed. We're putting information on community bulletin boards, on our websites, both Sheriff and Fire, so they have access to the information, and we're delivering it personally to those that attend the meetings. So we have a good relationship with the community there. The residents are grateful for the flow of information, and they have questions about the future, but we're keeping them apprised of what's going on in the present, and they appreciate very much being kept in the loop on all of those things. Several important decisions are going to have to be made in the future, the duration of the rescue effort, when it transitions to another phase, when Highway 101 is reopened, when residents are allowed to go back to yellow-tagged houses or to other houses in the area. Those are things we'll be dealing with and discussing with your Board on a daily basis. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Roper and allow him to talk from the fireside.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good afternoon. The operation, as far as the rescue goes, continues. We're still in a rescue mode, and what we're doing is re-analizing that every 24 hours. The rescue workers are still finding voids in the rubble pile. Some of you may have seen the voids up there when the Governor was there that they were able to put search cameras into. As long as we keep finding those, we believe that there still is a chance for survival for victims. Today, we also had a gentleman who brought up a special sonar device that was able to project down in the soils about 40 feet. He says that he's able to tell if a heartbeat is going at that level. So we're having him survey the entire area. The nice thing about the sonar is not susceptible to the heavy equipment working in the other areas like our earphones are up there. So we're waiting for those results today. Every day, we're holding a 5:00 PM press conference. Today, there will be the CHP representative, the Sheriff, and the Fire representatives there. We're expanding the group to answer all the lingering questions out there. It's anticipated that tonight, I have no indication not to continue the rescue phase of this operation, so I'll be announcing that we'll continue it for another 24 hours and reassessing that. In our conversations with the CHP, it appears that Caltrans is still working on the road. Even if we could clear the road with all the media vehicles, Caltrans isn't ready to open it. They're in preparation of that. We're also in preparation of moving all of our equipment. It's probably going to end up at Bates Road. That's where we had a staging area before in '95. And the media usually isn't too happy about that because they're a long way from the incident. But it looks like hopefully sometime on Saturday, 101 freeway may open. I agree with the Sheriff, there's a lot of public policy issues that we're going to be identifying and as we move from the rescue to the recovery phase.
Thanks, Bob, and all of you for the, not only the huge effort, but a lot of the personal risks that you and your people have been taking. I think that, I'm just going to summarize for you, and don't require anything more than that at this point, I don't think, unless there's some other staff that need to report in. But, you know, we are, all through these incidents, you know, you have the whole issue of risk and responsibility, you know? Who has what responsibility, who assumes what risk? And it's not just within the departments and everyone doing their job, but it also, we're now getting into focus concerning the residents, you know, what their responsibilities are and how much risk is to be assumed. One of the questions that we're getting from media constantly is when do the people get to go back and what are you doing to be sure they're safe in their homes? And these are very important and very delicate balance between personal rights, personal choice, and the kind of thing that we've just experienced, because this is not something that was totally unforeseen in the sense of, we knew it was a slide area, they knew it was a slide area for 10 years, but you never know when. California's an earthquake zone, and you never know when. So while most people get their news over the TV and on sitcoms or 30-minute shows where everybody has the answers in 30 minutes, this is truly reality, and we don't have it every 30 minutes. We are approaching this both from a short-term and a long-term decision-making process. Right now, we're in the hour-by-hour rescue mode, you know? As the Chief says, that things are happening, you know, literally minute by minute up there, including the good news, when someone steps forward that we thought, you know, might be buried, and they not only aren't, but they're alive and well. We also have a day-by-day schedule that we have to keep working and reevaluating as the information comes in. Our geologist is here in the audience, but we met with the Public Works and the geologist this morning and trying to get the best information. My understanding is there will be a consultation, I believe, on Friday, is it with the state geologist? Is that correct? Then we have, basically, this is, we are both in a rescue mode and we are in the emergency stage, but that will be coming to an end fairly quickly in the next few days, is our guess. And there's an estimate that it may take a week to get a really good fix on what's going on up there geologically. And we don't know how good that fix is. I mean, other than the fact that you're in California, it's a saturated soil, I mean, all the things that everybody knows anyway. But then we have to start thinking about, you know, what are the future implications of what is going on here and what public policy questions will have to be answered, and that we'll bring back to you. The immediate concern is always safety for everyone. The rescue effort, as the Chief says, that hope, as long as there's hope, you know, we continue in the rescue mode. And then there is the issue that I talked with Jeff Dean about this morning, which is, you know, there are real people who are not in their homes right now and who are camping out at the fairgrounds or wherever, and we need to start, we're talking with them. My understanding is the Sheriff's Office is allowing some access to the properties to get belongings, but we're still not talking about coming back and taking up residence, although there are some folks that have not left. The policy of this county has been that we warn people and we ask them, suggest they evacuate, but it's not a forcible thing unless it's endangerment of children or, you know, other extenuating circumstances. So we are dealing with both the sheltering of the people right now in the interim. We are dealing with a temporary return to their dwellings, and then the big question is, at what point and who makes what decisions regarding coming back to the homes? We have the issue of the utility companies returning the utilities back on, there's a whole variety of things. And we have the recovery mode, which is both for any victims that have yet to be identified, as well as the condition of that slope and the Public Works efforts. All of that's going to have to be done, and we're not trying to get ahead of ourselves. We're taking on the best information we have, a step at a time. So we're not in a position right now, or do we feel a need to ask your Board to take any, make any decisions today? But it would be, it's a good idea for all of us to be on standby for these things so that as these moments come up where we need to have some decisions, we'll be able to reach the right parties. I think that is pretty much the situation. Is there anything, Jeff, besides, yeah, for today, or for the hour, for the moment?
The request will be to the Board that we continue this Board meeting to 1 o'clock tomorrow so that we are ready, if need be, to respond to requests that come to us, questions, policies. Are there three that can make it? Can everyone be available, or?
It might be 15 minutes left.
We can make it 1:15. That's fine. Anything else on this issue?
Not on this issue, but if your Board has the time for a quick close session.
I would like to ask Mr. Arkun.
I have nothing on this issue.
Oh, okay, let's stick with this issue right now, and then I'll get you.
I just want to thank all the Board members for attending this morning's meeting. And I think it's much easier to make decisions about an issue if you've got the firsthand knowledge. So my personal thanks, and then my thanks to all the safety personnel. If you can pass on the Board's appreciation, I'd appreciate that also. Thank you.
And also, there is, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak, you certainly have that opportunity. This is an open public meeting. I didn't have any cards submitted, and I failed to ask that question. Okay. Then I'd like to ask, my question to our County Council is, our closed-session agenda of yesterday, can the Board continue discussion on any items that were in that session of yesterday?
Yes, this is just a continuance of yesterday's meeting, as tomorrow's meeting will be. You adjourned yesterday's meeting to this hour, and yesterday's agenda is still before you, to the extent you wish to take up matters from that agenda.
Okay.
And tomorrow, that agenda plus Item 59 will still be before you.
Very good.
And I might mention, if you want to go into closed session, would you then like to return and order the adjournment of this meeting to 1:00 PM tomorrow? Or would you like to order adjournment to be, order adjournment now to be effective after you finish closed sessions?
We'll do it now, and I'd like to ask that we adjourn to 1:15 tomorrow, and we'll go into a brief closed session. And anything else, Mr. CEO? Appreciate everyone. I know that you came in here wondering I know that you came in here wondering what was needed, what preparation, and I thank you for your time tremendously for all the efforts, and we'll see you probably back here tomorrow as we work together through this. Thank you.
Get some rest.